Welcome to the February 8, 2022 Meeting of the Select Board. I call this meeting to order. We're waiting for the screen to populate and I see that Marcus Nelson is here, a member of the board remotely. Hi, Marcus, can you hear us?
How are you?
Great, how are you? Nice to see you this evening.
Pretty well.
First item on the agenda is a public comment period. We have one resident who wishes to speak, Diane Blosato. If you could please approach, state your name and address for the record. You can sit here if that's probably better. Is that, is that mic working?
As you would.
Yep.
Okay. All right.
No, why don't you come up here, just so that you...
I'm open here, Diane.
Hi, Diane.
We work at the hospital together, volunteering at the hospital.
Yes.
Hi.
Hi, nice to see you this evening. If you just state your name and address for the record.
Yes, I am Diane Blosato.
And you can just pull that microphone up if you could for me. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Diane Blosato and I live at 9 Richard Road, Needham, Mass. Now, I lived in Needham for, just a little background, I'll try to make it quick. I lived in Needham for 66 years off and on. And I thought this letter, if I wanted to, you know, say for you and put together with care and discernment for you members, it's not about diversity, it's about truth. It's about God's truth. You know, as a nation from the beginning, our founding fathers believed in one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Don't we want this? Today, there is no mention of God in our homes, in our schools, in our streets. We all want to know the absolute truth, though it can seem scary. It's necessary, isn't it? I agree, there should be a common ground, but if we all were united as one under absolute truth, there would be no diversity. Please ponder these words in your hearts. I thank you for the hearing, a fellow Needham resident. Love to you all, Diane Blosato. Thank you for hearing me.
Diane, thank you for that and thank you for coming.
And you're my friend.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
You have a great evening.
You too.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, public hearing, Eversource, grant of location 59 Winding River And she is coming to us via Zoom. If we'll bring her over.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Callender. How are you this evening?
Doing very well. Hope everyone's well is as well.
Terrific. Okay, so you're here, if you could, the floor is yours to speak about 59 Winding River Road.
Yes, so Eversource is seeking a grant of location to install approximately 10 feet of conduit into Winding River Road, and this is to provide underground service to the new customer at 59 Winding River.
Thank you, Ms. Callender. This, is everything in order, Ms. Fitzpatrick?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here from the public that wishes to speak on this application? Seeing none in the audience, and I do not see any hands raised as an attendee, is there a motion? That the Select Board approve and sign a petition?
No motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Marcus?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, that is unanimous. Thank you for that, Ms. Callender, for that application. We go to the next one. Eversource, grant of location 155 Country Way. Again, the floor is yours on this application.
Yes, Eversource is seeking a grant of location to install approximately 68 feet of conduit into Scott Road, and this will allow us to provide new underground service to the customer at 155 Country Way.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. First, I will actually turn to Ms. Fitzpatrick, is everything in order?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this application? Seeing none, is there a motion? That the Select Board approve and sign a petition for Eversource Energy to install 68 feet of conduit in Scott Road? Moved by Mr. Matthews, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Keen. Any discussion? Come to the vote. Marcus?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, that is unanimous. Which brings us to the third petition. Eversource, grant of location 86 Plymouth Road. Ms. Callender?
Yes, so again, Eversource is seeking a grant of location to install approximately 16 feet of conduit into Plymouth Road, and that is to provide new underground service to the customer at 86 Plymouth Road.
Thank you, Ms. Callender. It is my understanding that this work was performed prior to coming to this board. Is that correct, Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
That's correct, and the homeowner is here.
Okay. So I would ask that the homeowner, please be moved over to attend this meeting to discuss.
I'm here.
And he is here, okay. Is that, Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you.
So, in front of us, we have an application which typically or has to come in front of us in order for any work to be performed, and it's our understanding that work has already been performed. Can you discuss the circumstances surrounding this, please?
Sure. So we started to build the house in November of 2020. In the spring of 2021, my builder asked me if we were going to do overhead electric or put it underground. He recommended underground, so I said, okay, let's do that. Then come January 7th, we had to fire our builder, and so electricity still wasn't hooked up, so I contacted the town and said, what's happening with electricity? How do we do this? And that's when I learned that we did the process entirely backwards. So my exposure to putting electric in was telling my builder nine months ago that, yes, let's put underground electric in. I was unaware of any of the other conditions that we needed to go through. And apparently, he wasn't aware of them either.
Okay. Mr. Stern, were you the, did you pull the permit on this, or did your licensed contractor pull the permit?
The contractor pulled it.
Okay, thank you. And what is the status of, you said that you fired your contractor? Do you have a substitute electrician or general contractor on this job?
So we are working on that as we speak.
Okay. Fine. It's more difficult when we have a homeowner come in because as a professional contractor, you should know the rules and regulations in town. And we've really strived in the past six, eight months, as you may have heard, to really make sure that contractors understand what they need to do in order to go through the process. And we've unfortunately had some of these in the past, and hopefully they have learned after they come before us, but the idea is never to come before us, and we're getting stricter and stricter on these. But I understand you're the homeowner and, you know, the contractor needs to do that work for themselves, and sometimes homeowners do get caught in the middle. I would just say that I'm concerned that there's no current electrician on this job or general, and I guess I would just want to make sure that before we approved any application that they came in, so we make sure that everyone's on the same page as we move forward on this application. But I would turn it over to the board, and actually first I will ask if there's anyone in the public, this is a public hearing, who wishes to comment on this application. Okay, seeing and hearing none, I turn it over to the board for comment. I will just say we have, I guess, some options we can do. We can, as I suggested, have the contractor come back in. We could obviously approve as the motion states, which we have not done in the past unless we have it subject to an electrical inspection. So I will turn it over, questions or comments on the board?
I guess, Mr. Stern, I'd like to ask the town manager for recommendations to, it's not unclear to me, is there an occupancy permit at this point? What do we need?
No.
No. It was our recommendation that the board could approve it pending they're hiring an electrician and receiving a new electrical permit from the building department.
So if we say that we're purving it pending they're hiring an electrician, what does that mean in real life?
Well, they can't get an electrical permit without an electrician, so the, what it would mean is that an electrician would get on the project and go and get a permit from the building department in order to run the work for this GOL.
Okay, because I just want to be really clear here. I'm sorry to monopolize this, Mr. Chairman.
You're not at all, Ms. Nelson.
I just want to be really clear so that we get this to a resolution that's complies with the law. And just to be clear to one thing that Mr. Stern had said, the record is very clear that the contractor was notified of the requirement to get the approval here in advance. And that requirement is there for a reason. It's because although overhead and underground look pretty similar to laypeople, the underground installation is an easement in the public way. It's something that the public has a right to know before we authorize it. And so that's why it has, it has to go through this process. And if you look in the records that you're, hopefully your contractor either made available to where you have now or could get if you need them, your contractor signed off on acknowledging that he or she was aware of these rules. So now we're back at the problem that we're talking about now. The work has been done. In order to move forward, the, the party needs a contractor. But if we were to, I'm just trying to work on the wordsmithing of this. What does a contractor need to do to, to, once, once they're on the job, to make sure that this is in order and that the town is satisfied that the work has been done properly?
Well, I will rely on others, but I believe the trench and the conduit are laid. It really requires the electrician to run the wiring to the property. That's all that's required. So it's the electrician's work that is what's left.
So the wiring hasn't actually been run yet?
That's...
Okay, the conduit's been installed, okay. So, so the next, now this is making sense to me, and I'm sorry that it takes me a little while to understand this, but the idea is that Mr. Stern will get a licensed contractor who will come in, properly install the line, and if we've given the approval pending that happening, then the electrician, the electrical department can inspect, make sure that everything is in order, and then move on in the ordinary course of business.
Okay.
Okay, my, my question is answered, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Matthews. I was under the impression that maybe the electrical wire was pulled and therefore might be necessary to make sure that when another contractor comes in, you know, they're using someone else's work and things get difficult.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make sure and ask Kristin and Miles, the electrical's not been pulled, is that correct? That you...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Was that trench inspected? Are we aware of the conduit and trench was inspected?
It was.
It was inspected, okay, fine. Further comments from this board?
I mean, I guess, Mr. Chairman, unless there's other comments?
Well, I'm gonna go to Marcus, I do see his hand. Mr. Nelson?
Yes. How you doing, Patrick? Nice to see you. I think with everything being said and the way that it looks like that we're headed, you know, once Patrick kind of found out what was done to his property, and it seems like a decision has been made to terminate his contractor, I think he's doing the necessary steps to get all of this done, and in good faith, it makes sense to, for us to rule on making sure if these things are done and the, the electrician has been hired, then it should be one of those things where, you know, it's kind of a no-brainer as to what we do next. And as strict as we've become with this, having the homeowner here, having Patrick here, talking to us, you know, through what happened, it's, it's, I would say it's more of an honest mistake from his side than it is from the contractor's side, but the decision's been made to no longer have that contractor, so this is where we are now.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Nelson, yes. And as I said earlier, and I agree, when the homeowner comes before us, you know, it's the responsibility of the contractor and the involvement of the homeowner isn't always clear. So I, with that being said, if the line has not been pulled, I think that we can have it subject to the electrical inspector reviewing the permit and doing the proper inspections and moving forward with that.
Recording in progress.
Unless, Ms. Cooley?
Well, I'm just wondering, do we need any change to the order to reflect that requirement? To be sure that that takes place, or will that happen?
That would happen in a motion.
That will happen?
In, in our motion, correct.
Okay.
I would, with regard to the order, I would think that the town manager's office would hold the order, and the members can come in and sign it after the, after the, this is all contingent on some things happening that we expect are going to happen pretty soon.
Correct.
But we would hold it, and then when those contingencies have been achieved, the town manager will notify the members that come in and sign the order, and we're done.
Fine. I would just ask if we move forward with this, if we can just get an update in a couple of weeks, Mr. Stern, just to see where you are in this process as you move forward, if that would be acceptable to you. Mr. Stern?
Yes, that would be fine.
Great, thank you. Okay, so is there a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer the motion, more or less in the form that it's in the packet. I'd say that I'd offer the motion that the Select Board approve and sign the petition from Eversource to install approximately 16 feet of conduit in Plymouth Road, contingent on the owner hiring an electrician, a new electrical permit issuing, and satisfactory completion, work satisfactory to, to the, to the town to be completed on, on the, on this, on the, on the relevant work.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Kevin?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Marcus?
Aye.
And the chair votes yes.
And then, just before we leave?
Yes, before we leave, yes.
I guess, maybe I, we all, some of us understand this work better than others. I assume that this is something that's going to happen pretty quickly, that the relevant professionals know what to do, that the, the building department inspectors know what need, know what needs to be done, and it's either going to be done or not. If it's not done, it's going to come back to us. If it is, then I wouldn't see any need for Mr. Stern to have to come back before the board if, if the, if the DP, if the building department has signed off on the work. Otherwise, we got a problem.
Right, that is correct, and that was the form of the motion. So, Mr. Stern, if everything goes forward and you hire a licensed electrician, you know, pull the permit, get it inspected, satisfactory to the building department, you will not have to return, we will hold the order, and once that work is signed off on, we will release that order for the work to proceed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stern. Thank you, Ms. Callender, as always. Nice to hear from you.
You're welcome. I apologize, I have a new laptop and I don't know why you're not seeing me. I have my video on, but all I see is a black box myself.
Well, it's better than a couple of weeks ago when you were, had to pull over, I believe, to do it, so this looks like a safer situation. So thank you for always taking your time to come in.
It makes me feel better that somebody else doesn't know how to use this.
You're not the first, you won't be the last. Have a great night.
Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Bye now.
Next item on the agenda, town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, as you know, we opened the town meeting warrant in January, and it's our practice to close the warrant in February. Just go over a couple of the items, if I might, Mr. Chair, that are not routine. We do have a couple of collective bargaining agreements that we're working on that show up in the human resource section. There are a number of financial warrant articles that appear every year. The new ones are, I think for the most part, all board goals that we've put in. The service delivery study at the RTS, the diversity, equity, and inclusion program, and the parking study. We had also sought funding for the Needham Council for Action Culture to be able to give more grants. We had our meeting with the finance committee, and then there was some conversation about whether they should simply have a line item in the budget as other committees do, so we'll continue to talk to the finance committee about that, and if that's something that makes sense for them, then we can withdraw this article, and there would be an annual Other items that are of note, the zoning bylaw change is the brewery proposal that the board had discussed at a prior meeting. The planning board is taking that up this, this week? Tomorrow, this week. Under the Community Preservation Act, articles, just a quick note, under the Emory Grover renovation design, this shows up under community preservation, but with both the Community Preservation Committee and the Select Board, given the multiple funding sources. And as we talked about at the board's meeting on the operating budget, we continue to recommend that an amount of free cash be used to lower the amount borrowed for this project. So we will have more for you in the next month on that. And then we have moved the Hillside School Heating Repairs and Upgrades article to next to the Emory Grover because it is really part of the Emory Grover project, just needs to be a separate article for other purposes, so that is under the CPC, and we'll talk to the CPC about that. I've included in the warrant all of the items that are, been submitted to the Community Preservation Committee for their consideration, and excluded those that have been withdrawn by the proponents, and there's a couple of those. I, I did want to note that there, Walker Pond Improvements remains in front of the CPC, but we have sent a draft article to Norfolk County, and we're really hoping to get positive feedback on that and file it with the county for ARPA reimbursement, so we're hoping that that can come off. With respect, you've discussed all of the capital.
Kate?
Mary Ann?
Do we have a timeline for when we'll hear back from Norfolk County?
If, if I hear back in the next week that they think it's reasonable, then we can pull it from the CPC, because, well, I'll have to do the formal process, it should be fine if they, they think it's okay.
Thank you.
Given the final rule from the Treasury with respect to stormwater and water quality and watershed, I think it's clear, so we may want to decide that anyway. The, the other item under the reserves, we did talk about during the budget process, is the new Public Safety Injury on Duty Fund that was approved at the last annual town meeting, so we are recommending that funding. Under the General Articles and Citizens Petitions, the board had agreed with the Director of Public Works to include an amendment to the general bylaws with respect to household refuse, which was actually making it a violation of the town bylaw to put household waste in a trash barrel. That might make it, give us one more tool, right? And then the other, the other one was snow and ice on sidewalks, and so right now it was only businesses in this would, would make it places of worship, multifamily housing, or hospitals, so just to make sure that the sidewalks, as, as you know, after the last really big storm, there's, there's patches of sidewalks that aren't getting, that aren't getting shoveled out, and we are working on that. We are holding a street acceptance for Hutter Ridge Road, making sure we, if we have all the paperwork on that, we would ask the board to approve that. And then the general bylaw and charter amendments are to codify that change in the law with respect to housing authority being not five elected, but four elected, so. And then finally, there was a citizens petition that was filed by the deadline on Monday with respect to the distribution of essentially these papers, and making certain requirements on how those are distributed. So with that, Mr. Chair, I would ask the board to close the warrant subject to minor technical correction, and also to, other than the obvious that we will already be doing, let me know what you might like to have presentations. We do have the CPC coming in in March, and I've scheduled the superintendent and PPBC to come in on Emory Grover in April, and so any other major items that you'd like to see, I'd be happy to get scheduled.
That's great, and that's what I was gonna just, just make clear, that if there are any questions or, you know, I won't reiterate again, but just speak with the town manager if there is any article you want clarification as far as an affirmative presentation. I do know that with the citizens petition, we will, or I know we'd want Mr. Segundola to come in to explain.
Yeah, I will ask him to come in, yep.
So that is fine. Is there a motion that the board vote to close the warrant for the 2022 annual town meeting, subject to minor technical corrections to be made by the town manager, town council, and bond council?
So, move.
Well, yeah, but let me, let me go through the vote. Is there a second? I understand, is there a second?
There's a second, yes.
Thank you. Discussion, Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, I was waiting until we did the vote, this talk, so I was just waiting my turn. Just a question about the hillside space, is that still under the impression as far as Emory Grover that would be used for a swing space while they're upgrading and doing that, and that's why we're spending the 250? I just wanted to, from recollection, I, I assume that's what it's for, or, or am I not correct?
So you're, you're correct, and there's additional. So this, I, we had an article in the Capitol Plan to replace the boilers at the Hillside School because as our, because the heat is failing and as an asset of the town, we have to be able to maintain heat in the building. There is fund, there are funds in the Emory Grover article for other upgrades to allow for spring space, but this was already in the works, and we're actually looking now at whether there are alternatives to replacing the boiler in terms of heat pumps or, or other that we might be able to do that would be more practical for that use. But, so it's both in the Emory Grover article, but this is the item that has been on the Capitol Plan for the last several years. So really regardless of what happens with the Emory Grover, this work needs to be done.
This is going to happen. So as far as you're thinking more energy efficient, we're talking about the heat pumps are different outlets?
Yes.
Or different abilities?
Yes, they are, yes. And I can report back on that by the middle of March.
Okay, all right, good to hear.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. And we're gonna have a presentation on that, is that what the PPBC?
I can make sure, yep.
That would be terrific, just to get even more clarification. Thank you for that question. Further discussion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Marcus?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Kevin?
Aye.
And the chair votes yes, that is unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move the consent agenda.
Motion to move the consent, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we come to the vote, Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, that is unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Cooley. Town manager, initial American Rescue Plan Act funding reallocation proposal. That is a mouthful.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On January 11th, the board approved a request to amend our funding proposal to allow approximately $230,000 for test kits for students and staff after meeting with the superintendent. We have received that order, almost exactly that price, and as part of that order, as you know, the schools are distributing theirs through a new program. The town side of the government received 1,530 test kits, and we're distributing them one or two kits per town employee, and we're coordinating with our, our departments. This would allow employees to access tests quickly and rapidly if there's an exposure or if there's a, a large event where they need to gather, such as snow and ice. We've also purchased some N95 and KN95 masks that we're providing to staff members, and we could have available for members of the general public who don't have masks. The surgical masks are more likely to be handed out in that capacity. We also bought surgical masks. Both are starting to be rolled out this week. Given that we may not need all of these, our Health and Human Services staff has been discussing with the housing authority whether there's some... discussing with the housing authority whether there's some test kits that can be provided to them that would allow their residents to be able to access them quickly and without cost. As you know, you can get a number eight kits approved to be funded by your health insurance carrier, but you also have to shell out the money in advance and wait for reimbursement. So given that we don't think we're gonna need all of them, we would ask the board to amend your original vote on the American Rescue Plan funding proposal to allow us to approve the allocation of up to 500 test kits for residents of limited means and those in high-risk groups. We have also heard from our Commission on Disabilities that they have a number of people that they believe would benefit from the kits, and we can coordinate that also through our Health and Human Services Department.
Terrific. Thank you for that, and I would just ask for a future agenda item to put a recap and a status of the, you know, the test kits that we ordered, how they're being allocated and the number, and as well as the desire for people, you know, just an update how we're doing on that rollout. Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, I just wanted to know if we heard back at all as far as the supply that we're coming in from, we talked about with Governor Baker and what was being ordered in that sense as to what may be coming. I believe, you know, if that were to come sooner than that, then we may not have to spend the 230 on this. I know we went back and forth, and Mary Ann brought up a couple of points as well back then. Just wanted to know if there's an update with that.
We, the school department did purchase the kits. I don't believe that their allocation from the Commonwealth has come in yet. I can follow up, though.
Right. And I guess the belief there, I assume, is that they wanted to get their hands on them and didn't know what the lag time would be with the state. I think the superintendent said that, but that's a valid question, and we can get more information on that order and how they're being allocated. Further discussion on this item? I think it makes sense, yes, Ms. Cooley?
So I was gonna say, but just in case it wasn't clear, the answer is we have already spent the money.
Yep, we spent the money.
Money spent.
Correct.
That was my question. Thank you, hearing none.
Yes.
The criteria is before the winter break, right? That was sort of the deadline to get this in, so we beat that, or they beat that.
Right. The time sensitivity was to get it before, that's right, the February recess, and to make it through to the February recess, so.
It was to use for the four weeks before that, so we didn't quite make that.
Right. But we'll get more information on that. So any further discussion on the allocation of up to 500 test kits for residents of limited means and those in high-risk groups? I think it makes sense. It goes with the intent of the funds, and if there's a need, I think that we can accommodate that need. Is there any further discussion? Is there a motion that the board vote to approve the reallocation of American Rescue Plan funding to provide for the acquisition of at-home COVID-19 testing kits for staff and students, and to approve the allocation of up to 500 test kits for residents of limited means in those in high-risk groups? Is there such a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Marcus?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Kevin?
Aye.
And the chair votes yes, that is unanimous. Town manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Three items tonight. One, I'm pleased to report that our Public Health Department received a grant from the Metro West Health Foundation in the amount of $50,000 to help us support the rental and operation of an Abbott ID Now rapid test machine. And this is a machine that can not only test for COVID, but also for flu and other respiratory infections, so it would be useful for us with all, with sort of a wide range. We plan to start testing it with staff and then move it onto the public as particularly in sensitive groups as staffing allows. So this is something we were looking into, and it's just great that we were able to get that grant for it.
Without getting too technical, how does the, it's a machine?
Yes, and it essentially is a, it is a rapid test like the home test, but it's.
Yes, just reusable. You can reuse it instead of throwing it out.
Exactly. It comes with kits that you use it for.
I want to ask for the technical details how it works, but that sounds terrific.
Tiffany explained it much better.
Thank you.
Thank you. Quick outdoor dining update, you will have some outdoor dining on your agenda at your next meeting. Just a reminder that the relaxed outdoor dining rules are gonna expire April 1st unless the legislature takes action, which may happen. The staff, particularly Miles and Amy and Katie, have been working with businesses to get them in the right place. Last week, the planning board approved an application from Howard, and they also approved an application from the town because we had to make outdoor dining allowable use on the town's parking lot. So those happened last week. We're also doing a similar proposal for the Chapel Street parking lot, so those are in progress. We had anticipated a large influx, and that hasn't happened, given probably the competing priorities of restaurants and the staffing challenges that they have. So we'll be taking these on a rolling basis moving forward. Just really encouraging anyone to get them in as early as possible, and the board recognizes that at this point it may not make April 1st for all of them because there just simply aren't, isn't the time allowed, especially if they have to go through both processes. So we would hope that the legislature would extend that deadline, which I think is in the works through July, I think is what the proposal was. But just so you know, that the staff is in touch with all of the restaurants who have indicated an interest in outdoor dining and working with them on that. It's a complicated process. And, Mr. Chair, I would just note that we are, like, a few numbers shy of our, hitting our 3,000th subscriber to the News You Need 'Em newsletter, and so I would encourage anyone who hasn't seen the newsletter, we get incredibly positive feedback from it. You can get it right from the front page of our website. Sign up for News You Need 'Em and put us over the 3,000. That would be great. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, that is terrific, and yeah, I enjoy getting those newsletters and a bit of positive news of what the town is doing and a lot of many things. It's just nice to get out there to show what we're doing, so that's great. We'll get those extra subscribers. I know the Needham channel has quite a following, so we expect a spike after this meeting or tomorrow, so thank you for bringing that to our attention. Next item on the agenda, I'm gonna move things on the agenda, so we have a board discussion. I'd like to start with the Mass. Use Department of Housing and Community Development MBTA draft multifamily zoning guidelines. It's my understanding that Mr. Matthews wishes to speak on that item, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Floor is yours.
I'd ask for a little time on this as being related to committee reports and a matter that although it's mainly within the work area of one committee, is likely to engender substantial public policy discussion in the state in the coming weeks, and to try to make sure that we at least make an effort to make sure the people that are interested in this. And it really affects affordable housing issues here in the Commonwealth. Marcus and I serve on the Housing Working Group, which is an interagency committee here under the jurisdiction of the planning board, focused on looking at options to improve the range of moderately priced housing available in the town. Something that has developed in recent weeks, building off of some legislation in the Economic Development Act passed by the legislature and signed by the governor, and I believe in 2019, are regulations issued by the Department of Housing and Community Development, or DHCD as it's known, to encourage multifamily housing near MBTA stations. For Needham, and this is gonna apply, it's in, these regulations are in draft form, but they're clearly being fast-tracked because this is a priority of the governor's administration, and they're down in their last year, so they want to get this, they want to get this done. For Needham, the ask is approximately 150 acres zone to allow 15 or more housing units per acre as of right, with those zones being of at least five acres each, and with that total area in that is zone for that use to be with, at least half of that to be within half a mile of a train station, of which, of course, we have four here in Needham. That's based on a formula requiring for towns that are in what are called a bus service area, which they count us, although we may think of ourselves as more of a train town. That requires a formula based on requiring one acre zone for multifamily housing for every 15 total housing units in the town. Right now, Needham has about 14 acres that meet that definition, but we might not be as far away from the goal line if we decide to work with this policy as appears in the sense that we have substantial areas in town that are zoned for apartments but have a special permit requirement, which would have to not apply in order to count. Our general residence areas, which I don't know the exact total, but it's easily over 100 acres, allow over eight units per acre by right and are largely proximate to rail stations. Our existing commercial areas already allow other forms of dense development, if not housing, and we also do have some other areas in addition to the 14 areas, 14 acres that I referenced, that are multifamily by right, but they are smaller than the five-acre minimum, but if you were to expand those areas, you might, you would, there are some options to work with. So this may be workable. But one of the things you learn in the zoning business is that people don't like change, even when it's moving in a direction that the public policies that we talk about say is an important goal to improve housing options. There is already a, there is a, this really, one of the defects of this is this kind of has come out as a surprise to a lot of people working in the area. It's complicated, and the immediate response from a number of communities is a lot of pushback. And so, and so it may be that this is gonna go nowhere. It's really, what we need to do, though, is, I would suggest, and I'm kind of raising the argument here for people to think about, is we've talked for years about, in affordable housing, a major problem in our housing market regionally is the regional shortfall, supply and demand imbalance, not enough market-priced, moderate-income housing. That's the reason why housing goes up in price more than the cost of living just about every year around here, and with, in the MBT area, there are literally 175 separate zoning authorities, and they're all operating in a kind of a prisoner's dilemma environment in which their residents are concerned about issues of traffic, density, infrastructure, school costs, and other perceived burdens that no individual town will step up and be able to solve this problem at their own. It has to take a regional effort. These guidelines, although I think it is fair to say that there are issues in them and they're imperfect and even a reach by the governor's office in certain extent, is a good-faith effort to address a serious regional issue, and I would hope that Needham, in our own response, tries to find a constructive way to engage with this age, this issue, and to constructively work, and to encourage other communities that we partner with or are in contact with during, in our work regionally and statewide, to work in a policy of constructive engagement as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews, and thank you, Mr. Nelson, for both serving on that group. It's a tall task, as we've discussed, and a lot of, raises a lot more questions than I think right now we have answers. You know, I'm a fan of letting the market dictate housing prices. Actually, I just saw an article, homes in the Metro West area or, you know, eastern Mass under 300,000, and there are a handful, believe it or not, it's just not around this area. So we are just so desirable that now having something that's reasonable in town is really no longer an option. So there has to be a solution to try to, to try to gain that affordability, but, you know, the problem may arise that when you increase housing stock, just say you turn a two-family into a four, right? Now you just have four expensive units instead of two. So some type of affordability restriction, I think, is being discussed if you allow that. I think we do have the zones to allow that, as we talked about with the general residence, and there could be greater density in other areas as well. I know our rule of thumb was, what, 16 or 14 an acre back in the day, but that might have to be looked at again. So it's a long discussion with a lot of tentacles, and I know that we're gonna have discussions moving forward. I don't know when the right time would be to kind of have a meeting or an update from the group, but it seems that might be a little further away than sooner, would you say, Mr. Matthews?
Well, I think there are a couple of things going on. Of course, Housing Working Group has a meeting on Thursday, and we'll have an opportunity to talk about it at least a little bit at that point. And it is kind of a state influx issue in the sense that it's a significant change, but it is not clear sitting here today whether or not it's gonna end up having the force of law in the near future. So there's a lot to talk about. I do think, though, that, for example, we saw a letter from one community today that was clearly being circulated regionally, trying to build support, pushing back the other way about this. I think that groups such as the Mass. Municipal Association, our legislative delegation and so on are gonna be asked to weigh in on this, and I think that at some point, this board may be called upon to state its, to state its views. And I'm sort of taking a little time tonight to just kind of flag this as something that is coming towards us. I know the staff is working on doing analysis and being able to provide whatever detail and recommendations that we need. And also, I know that there are people in the community that are interested in these issues and trying to find good ways to move forward, and I want to encourage them to access information about this. I can say that on the Housing Working Group's webpage, there is a link to the draft guidelines as well as a link to a seminar that was basically a presentation by the governor's representatives from the secretariat level and the agencies working on this, to local government personnel explaining what this is. So it's a good seminar presentation from the Mass. Municipal Association. It's on the HWG Working Group page as well as the full text of the guidelines themselves, and so people can kind of look at that. And our, the town zoning map is also on our own website and readily accessible, and people can kind of get a look at how our zoning looks now and think about what they might want to recommend as a ways to work with this or to judge what the impact of it is.
Great. Thank you again. Discussion, Ms. Cooley?
So I thank Mr. Matthews for raising this, because I actually think this is quite an important piece of work for us to do, and more than that, I think it changes fundamentally the way we've been thinking about affordable housing, and that presents a challenge for the Affordable Housing Committee that had started their work, I think, under one set of premises, and in fact, the premises that we really need to be discussing are a different set. So I'm hoping that they're able to take into account that switch and start the town's thinking about this new approach. You know, Needham worked very hard on the old, the rules of the game as they previously existed, and under that basis, we contributed, in fact, significantly to an expansion of housing in the region, more than our neighboring communities. But we are being asked to do more still under this new plan, and the way that we will have to do it is quite different from the way we did it in the past. So we will take a lot of input from our citizens as we figure out what that looks like going forward.
Right, thank you. Further discussion? I think there'll come a point in time, I could be wrong, where, you know, a committee and the ideas might have to lead into some type of overall consultant, and I know we hate the word consultant, we push it, but I think it's so massive, and you can see all these cities and towns are going to be faced with the same problem, and we've always talked about rewriting our zoning as far as some inconsistencies are in there and maybe doing something different there. There might, it kind of might come to a head where we might merge those two in the years to come. I think in the meantime, we can do, you know, solutions that are quick and easy to get through, you know, in some of these zones, but I think overall, long-term strategy might head in that direction. But I thank you again, Mr. Matthews, for bringing that up, and I look forward to the updates. Are there any other committee reports? Okay, hearing none? Oh, yes, Ms. Cooley.
Another committee report. I do just want to mention, I have continued work on the Climate Planning Action Committee. I am expecting to make recommendations to this board tomorrow, and then we will make those appointments at our next meeting.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to note in our consent agenda, there were a number of. I just wanted to note in our consent agenda, there were a number of liquor violations, unfortunately, that the town experienced over the past couple of months in one sting. And Marian and I and the town manager and Miles sat in a room and we had about three hours of having these license holders come in and explain what happened, which they ranged from an ID that was misread to an ID that was misread and then realized right after the point of sale that it wasn't read correctly and voided the sale, all the way to offenses, multiple offenses that were, I think it was the fourth offense or fifth offense for one of the applicants. So we recommended and they were adopted tonight, the punishment for these, we are going to have a public hearing that's going to come before this board for the, is it the Residence Inn? I just want to get the right one. The Residence Inn, that was the large violator. And just wanted to note that for the board. But we did vote, as we all know, on the violations for these applicants, which, license holders, which include, in some instances, suspension of the license for one day. And we told them that if they have to come in before us, it's going to be, again, it's going to be a much harsher punishment than we're issuing this evening. So let's hope that we have full compliance next time. Ms. Cooley?
You know, I would just say, it was actually quite an interesting session. And we got a lot of good input in, from the businesses in terms of understanding the state of the businesses right now and how it's going. We do continue to encourage the public to patronize the businesses and order your takeout from them and keep doing that. But I'm also encouraged that more and more of them are moving to technology solutions that can help make it easier for them to read a license and to know quickly whether it's good or not. So we're making some progress across the board.
Real progress. And, you know, unfortunate circumstance, but you're correct. We had, you know, the meet and greet sit-down. January has been very difficult for the restaurants. And as Ms. Cooley said, you know, take out, dine in, just please frequent our establishments. You know, that's what they need. And some of them are in dire consequences, others are doing okay. But we need to visit them or take out from them. So thank you for that. Next item on the agenda, Carter Mill Project discussion. I'm actually going to recuse myself from this conversation just for this evening. But I ask that Ms. Cooley, as vice chair, will now take the gavel. And I wish everyone good evening. Thank you. Ms. Cooley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So we wanted to take a few moments tonight just to discuss the new developments that have come with respect to the Carter Mill project. And Kate and I didn't get a chance to talk, so I don't know if you want to say any preparatory words or...
Nope.
The Planning Board did have a review where the developer came in and met with them last week, I think it was last week, maybe Thursday night, if I'm remembering my nights, and presented somewhat of their new plan. You will recall that when town meeting voted this, sorry, last spring, last fall. I can't remember whether it was spring or fall anymore when we...
Spring.
Spring, when we actually made the change. When we changed the zoning, we were changing it on the basis of a project that had been presented to the town, in fact. And that project included memory care, assisted living, and independent living. And the independent living also included an affordable housing component. The town was actually very excited about the prospect of independent living and some affordable units in that area. As you know, for independent seniors, that is a wonderful location. It's close to the center at the Heights, right across from Trader Joe's, from a CVS. It's next to the train station. It's got, you know, a coffee store and a bagel store, so lots of nicely walkable area. They had proposed sort of a street view that had patios along it for social interaction. We thought it would be, in fact, a really wonderful upgrade to be able to do that. The new proposal that they've come back to us with is a proposal that eliminates the independent living component. What they indicated to the planning board was that they thought that people who were interested in independent living would purchase their assisted living product. So I think we just wanted to open it up for this board to get our sense of the project as it currently exists so that we can provide some feedback to the planning board before they make any final decisions or recommendations or asks further with the developer. So I'll open it up if somebody wants to. I see Marcus has a hand up?
Yeah, thank you, Marian. I think, you know, watching that meeting last week and kind of getting a glimpse of what the, I believe the CEO's name was Mark, and what the other folks had to say, I think even, I believe it was Paul or Marty that suggested, you know, what if we did independent, if we did the independent care and we left out the memory care portion, so we have that affordable housing piece? And something else that really struck the board, the planning board, is the fact that, you know, something like this is happening in Brookline and the affordable housing piece was there, so why isn't, why can't we do that in Need 'Em? And it seemed like Mark got a little, not want to say perturbed, but it just seemed like what he was saying is that since it was a ground, from the ground up that they did that facility, made it a little bit different and that we were getting hung up on that one piece. And there's no way, according to, you know, what I heard, is that all three pieces could fit in there and that might be problematic or tough to kind of, to make work. And, you know, listening to all the members on the planning board, it seems like to them and to myself and I'm sure most of us, the affordable housing piece and having the ability to have that in there is something that the town wants, something that we were all excited for. But they didn't necessarily close the door permanently on that. I think they need to go and rework and kind of have that idea of this is something that we want to be a part, you know, and I'm sorry, I'm speaking for myself, but I know I've talked to enough people and listened to that call to know that, you know, without that affordable housing piece, and that may be something that is really tough to get the special permit for. So doing their due diligence and, you know, according to this CEO is that that's not the way that they've kind of done it in the past, for the most part. Brookline, they've done it, but out in Colorado and some other places, they haven't had that affordable housing piece. And there hasn't been a lot of pushback, is what he said. But also, it seems like there was just a lot of back and forth as to what the town of Need 'Em would like to see and what they would like to see from their end.
Thank you, Marcus. I think part of what Need 'Em wanted to see was what we approved. Other comments?
I think that's a good way to say it.
Kevin?
I watched, I agree with the planning board. There is no public good to their plan. We get nothing as a community to either have 60-plus housing or affordable housing. And I remember thinking that the CEO's argument that you don't want assisted living or independent living because eventually we're all going to end up in, you know, acute care.
Memory care.
It's like, all right, well, we won't give you a school system then. I mean, it sort of seemed horribly fatalistic. But I agree with this planning board. I think it was, we need a public good out of this. And I think town meeting voted it with the understanding that there would be affordable housing and senior housing there.
Dan?
Yeah, I think I share everyone's disappointment that's worked on this from the town side of the table. I would say, I'd have to flag a couple of things in the usual way. The primary jurisdiction for this is in the planning board to manage this issue. We offer our opinions, people talk to us, we've worked on our parts of this, and we are disappointed, I think it's fair to say, from everything that I've heard. The second is, you know, the developer, it's a private business. We can't make them do one thing or another. We had to get to yes. But still, this is a huge, it's, like I say, it's really a disappointment because two years of work went into this. They're very knowledgeable people. They proposed a three-part program, which includes the independent living, the assisted, and the memory care. And now taking out the independent living, which is really, from the point of view of the town, the most important part for people who, for seniors that want to downsize, to have improved the vibrancy of that neighborhood and all of the other things. And it's, and the independent living is synergistic with the presence of our senior center and public transportation. Right there, it was, this, it really, really devalues the deal, which, and it was the deal. This zoning was done specifically for this new property owner in order to reactivate the property in what was seen as being a win-win for everybody. But it included adding a fourth floor to the building, which is more than would be allowed otherwise. So I guess my thing, my suggestions were, I encourage particularly town meeting members or anybody else that's going to be working or feels like a stakeholder in this issue, which in theory is everybody that lives in town, watch the planning board meeting. It's a very clear explanation, both from the side of the developer, why it is that they say that they're, they want to do this and that the business rationale supports It doesn't start at the beginning of the meeting and it's a long meeting, but the tape is in the YouTube archive, which is readily findable on our town website. And it's the February 1 Planning Board meeting, starts at minute 40, goes to minute 1:56. You don't, you don't have, it doesn't take an hour and a half to watch because you, there's a little gizmo that allows you to speed it up and most people don't speak that fast anyway. So, but I would really commend it to folks' attention. This is going to, there will clearly be some negotiation around this. And it's important that that property get back into use, but it's important that the legitimate expectations of the town are met. And as I say, the developer is not new to this line of work. And they do similar work, as Marcus said, in Brookline. The argument that they make in the tape, not to have a spoiler alert, is that they found that the building is too small for what they want to do. They knew what size the property was when they came into it. So I think some serious discussions have to be held. Hopefully, this developer can come to agreement with the planning board and be a good corporate citizen here and will meet the need, will come out with, as we said, a win-win, which has been our goal all along. But otherwise, we will follow the developments and hopefully, and work in support of the planning board in their efforts. That's my view. Thank you.
Madam Vice Chair, does the board want to send a letter to the planning board?
Yeah, I think if the town manager thinks that she can write a letter that represents our opinion, that's good.
So I think, just to be clear, as Mr. Matthews said, this was not, in fact, a particular proposal that was brought to the planning board. In that sense, it was exploratory and the company was coming to discuss the changes that they were waiting to propose. I think the time then to give them feedback is now, before they have actually crafted it into a final proposal. And hopefully, they will be able to be responsive to the concerns of the community. I think all of us understand, one of the questions that got raised was perhaps they could eliminate memory care and just do the independent living and assisted. And they are saying, you know, there's a tremendous need for memory care. I think for people in town who have been caring for people with dementia and have been looking for places that are wonderful places for them to be or good places for them to be, that we all know that memory care units are a challenge. But we also want something that will benefit the citizens of our community to create a vibrant location. As Mr. Matthews said, we do want that building to be back in service, but we want it to be in service in a way that actually contributes to the community. So...
I would also note, I believe it was October of 20.
October of 20. It's pandemic time.
It was outside, that's all.
Right. There we go. I would very much appreciate it if you could write a letter on our behalf to the planning board, expressing those concerns. Any other comments?
Thank you.
Then I think we have reached the end of our agenda. And I would welcome a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right. Marcus?
Aye.
Dan?
Yes.
Kevin?
Aye.
And the chair, vice chair, says aye. We are adjourned.
Thank you.